I guess with a quick roll please.
Adams.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Walter.
She is excused.
Walterman.
Here.
Merle.
Here. Yeah, Ms. Walter will not be here tonight. Her absence is excused. Where do we want to start?
Right at the top of this.
Alright. That M I R over there.
There we go. Yes, the first thing you guys can each take one and then they will be discussing.
Yeah.
Okay, the first item is the temporary appropriation. Yeah, we typically do a temporary waiting till after the first of the year when we know for sure how we ended this year. So what we did this time, I listed a couple of extra columns on here. We looked at what we had in our appropriation for 2012. If we did any supplementals during the course of the year. Kim added those figures in so we have a true picture of what 2012 is probably going to end up looking like. And then we took 10% of that, excuse me, 25% of that figure. It may differ a little bit if we knew, for example, somewhere there's a payment that we have to make on a car. We're putting that in the temporary. Did you have that last year? So just a couple of tiny little differences like that that you're going to notice in this appropriation. The only figures I think I really want to dig into, feel free to look at it, let me know if you have any questions. But if you go back about, oh, you see one handwritten note I have in the columns. I was just trying to draw your attention on the fifth page back. The transfer grant related, we were checking, Kim was checking for me and we did confirm that we have purchase orders in those categories so we don't have to reput them in the temporary, 2014 temporary. We can carry that over through the existing purchase order. That's our mid road project. And we're just not sure that all those draws will be done and closed out by the end of the year. So we wanted to watch that one carefully. And then about three or four pages back, there's two different categories, spoils field and golf. And I apologize, I didn't think of that when I was flipping through these pages.
Alright.
Can I explain?
We have about three or four from the end.
Okay, spoils, you know, spoils is doing good. The one thing I wanted to note there, and I did have a chance to mention this to Mr. Hermes. You might want to discuss it at appropriation, but we do have the potential to be booking some, a second field up there. We've talked about it from time to time. We have soccer uses it in the spring, although we're confirming it, they use it in the summer as well. But we may have the potential to do a spring soccer and then summer softball there. Then right below that, you'll see golf. I do have, I left it blank at this point in time. I have started putting together some numbers on this for you to take a look at over time with the golf course. There we go. And what you're looking at here are simply the passes, you know, our revenue at the top, and then the expense line, and then showing you, you know, as a plus or minus. It's been a minus, however, we do transfers from the general fund to said that amount. But the figures that you should know, that I'm still gathering them, but I have handwritten some below. But you see, I had the 2012 that was current and there are items that are not included in that expense category at this point in time would be the groundskeeper. You'll see in 2011, that was about $34,000. We cut the time, if you remember, we cut a month off, I think on both ends, and limited him to 32 hours a week during, just during the season, so that cost to 20,000. We are still paying on equipment, one of the millers, we have chemicals, some utilities, and there could be some other miscellaneous costs. But I'll try to build that for the previous years too, so you can get a feel for where we are on that. Thought you might want to see that as we move forward with the appropriation.
We had a few inches off of course.
Right, and we did, our groundskeeper has retired now. So we're going to be finding ourselves in a position of filling that position probably at a higher cost than where it was previously being filled.
Do we know, I'm just looking back to 2007, there's some serious difference between 2007 and this year. We did better over last year, but we're still not where we were in 2007. Is that just less people using it, less people aware of it? Was there a price difference for golfing?
It hadn't gone up much, I don't think it's price.
I think you had company that appears Jeff, you know? Nobody was doing anything at that time.
That could be true, I just didn't know if our fee structure changed at all during that.
No, there's been marginal increases, but nothing that would stop the likes of Bud Walterman or other avid golfers.
I don't think the fees are the issue. I don't agree. Is it junior golf or is this rough dog?
That's in there, the fees are in there as well.
I mean, what's going away since I said, well, you don't.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't either.
We can, you know, we can try and build it, I just.
So just going back to my question though.
Spending money guys, I mean, everybody, I mean, there's so many businesses that have closed. 2008, '09, you can see how it's going down.
Sure, I mean, I'm sure that's playing into it, but I'm just curious.
All the rest of the golf courses are suffering just as much. You know, I go golfing around and they're trying to draw a business, and it's very difficult.
Yeah, I'm paying less now if I want to go play eighteen than I was ten years ago.
There's a lot of golf courses in trouble, honestly.
Sure. I'm not debating, do we know that the structure from 2007 through now?
I would try to find that.
I would venture to say, my seat of the pants is I've been playing, we've been having our Thursday league since then. Which is before then. I don't think the fees have gone up more than $2. In fact, I think they've only gone up maybe about.
I was thinking.
I'm just responding to, I know Charlie had mentioned, he felt our fees are too low. And so I know that compared to other golf courses, that they are quite low. And I know if we want to run a special or do a group bond or something like that, there's nothing really to even discount. I mean, it's like, oh, come for free. And it's not a big deal, it's just trying to find out where we are. And it's still, it's beyond a bargain compared to regular golfing. And so for a regular golf course, granted, it's different.
But it's not, but it's not regular golf. Actually, we are competing against regular golf courses, we're competing against the other part threes. And most all of them are out of business.
Well, we can discuss.
Yeah.
Well, the part three roundness we compete with is the one that keeps changing ownership. And it was Golf Ranch, and then it was Golden T, and now it's Golf Something Center, Cincinnati Golf Center or something like that, it's trying to change hands again.
But my thinking, and I know we can dig into it deeper, is yes, we're competing against other part threes, but on the other hand, people will trade down. I still want to golf, I don't have as much time as I used to have, kind of thing. And I don't want to drop that kind of money, so we can capture that possibly if we market it.
I think if we market it and raise the fees, we'd make a big difference.
So we just have to invest some money into marketing, marketing strategy, putting it in the paper, putting it online?
Well, we still have a restroom issue in my opinion. But we'll definitely need to dig deeper into golf and decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, our guys on Thursday night wouldn't blink at 10 bucks, I'm sure. I mean, not that that's suggesting we make it down, I'm just saying that there's, I think there's room to.
Very reasonable.
Those would be the only items at this point in time that everyone pointed out, but certainly take a look through it.
I understand the 2012 temporary, that's first quarter 2012.
Correct, and that's what the appropriation is.
And then you've got your permanent annual. And then you've got, I guess revised annual. And 25%, is that supposed to project 2013? Is that what you're shooting for there?
Right.
The first quarter.
Is that 25% of that, is that only 25% of through 11/30?
Well, that, well, as I said, 11/30 is the total appropriation, that's the total annual appropriation. But that's expected, that's not expenditures, that's appropriation, that's how much.
Well, for purposes of this, that's our fiscal year.
Right, that's how much we projected to spend through the end of the calendar year.
Okay, so the quarter we're projecting is December through February?
No, we need to make it this temporary appropriation so we can spend money January, February, and March. And basically, we're taking a look at what our best guess is, what the total year, so that total appropriation as of 11/30. This is still our total appropriation for the year unless we do a supplemental in December. But we've typically got the money appropriated for the entire year, right?
Why is it 11/30, I guess I'm not understanding it. Why is it through 11/30, why is that the total?
Because that's.
That's where we have December, December's that, it was never.
Right, because we haven't appropriated anything in the month of December yet. And we may or may not.
Right. They can't, won't be doing any more supplemental changes.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't changed the appropriations. Since we didn't do anything yet, the initial meeting in November, there aren't going to be any changes in supplemental appropriation. So that supplemental appropriation is valid at least through the end of November. Okay? So if there are any changes in the appropriation, we have to do a supplemental. But any of this reflects the main appropriation on supplemental appropriations. And which, since we aren't going to have a voting session in less November, that's why it's valid through 11/30.
I should know this, I know, but I still. So this is, this number 21-5 is actually a projected number. It's effective through 11/30, however, it includes the entire fourth.
Right, everything we expect.
So the total year number for the calendar year is in there.
That's the whole year number.
But that's, okay.
That's just the appropriation, that's not expenditures.
Alright, anything else? Finance committee, I suspect you're going to have a meeting to discuss.
Yeah. Yep.
Do you have a date? No, okay, that's fine.
I need to get with the manager.
Alright.
And Jeff.
Yeah, I like the way you're doing this now. You're wanting to go, kind of, I think it's like we're looking at specific entities rather than various entities. You know, it's really, you know, it's good.
Okay, the next item is a draft of a proposed 2013 fee schedule. And I tried to highlight, I believe all the changes suggested are highlighted in red. And I'll run through those real quick. We have an overall change we'd like to make in deposits. That's one of those things where, you know, you hold them for rentals, the picnic shelter, things like that. And we're constantly doing this whole long line of refunds. So some ways that other communities have handled that, that we think we'd like to propose here is that if you're going to do a deposit, do it with a credit card, we hold a number. If there's charges, we charge it, if there aren't, you know, it's shredded and everybody goes their own way. So we're not constantly generating more work and more checks to have to refund a deposit. So that's one big suggestion that we have. Swimming pool, I am suggesting we would like to reduce the rental rate. What we now have, I believe right now, was like $250 for four hours plus the cost of the lifeguards. And that appeared to be pretty excessive for most people who wanted to rent that. So we are looking at $50 plus the cost of the lifeguards. That, I mean, that's the big cost that we want to try and offset anyway. The 50 would be, you know, water bill, utility bill, something like that for that rental, so.
What's the lifeguard cost typically on an hourly basis?
It's probably right around $20, it would be the high end, $20 an hour for lifeguard.
For lifeguard, and then that's determined by how many people you expect as your.
Right, how many people, and typically, we've been looking at the whole pool, but one of the ways that we can reduce that cost even more, our pool is situated such that you almost need somebody everywhere. But if we could start like saying, well, maybe just at this end of the pool will be, you know, it's kids. Maybe they're satisfied to just be at one of the pools, we can reduce the number of lifeguards.
Seventy's birthday again.
Something like that. So yeah, we're going to try and find other ways too to lower that cost to make it more affordable for rentals.
How do we, is it just word of mouth that people are aware of the pool being? You had one business that was interested, I know that one fell through the restaurant.
Right.
But how did?
Well, they actually saw, they ran a motion at the loaves. We did give it on the website, we do put it, it's one of our advertisements usually during the summer.
Does this impact our insurance at all, we have to do any of the insurance?
No, we're already covered on that, pretty sure. Okay, let's see, dump truck again, we're suggesting that be handled through a credit card. We do, we have some time additional disposal fees depending on what the individual puts in the truck. So that would be a rare, a rare event, but if so, it would be covered for that additional charge.
Is that for the weekend or what is it?
Yeah, they drop it off in your driveway on Friday afternoon and then they pick it up Monday morning.
And it's $80. Okay, down to the pool again, we are suggesting that there being increased, it is a small increase, but it would put the family at 175, that would be the early, the over rate in 200. It's currently, I believe, 150 and 185. Increasing the non-resident, 225 to 250, every discounted rate, same singles. Currently that is, I think, two, I should, sorry. We increased it in the same amount, must be 200 and 225. We looked at area communities that took, first, we have actually decreased since some information we found about three or four years ago. So I don't know what caused that, a couple of years ago, we actually dropped your rates back. So we even, I just know we haven't increased this, this would be our first suggested increase, but we are very low. There are fewer and fewer community pools, you know, communities are just finding it's something they can't continue to fund. Those who are probably in the neighborhood, probably they're in the neighborhood of about 250 to 255 for a family membership.
Is there?
We're still very low.
Is there any way, I don't think it has to be an apples to apples raise, that the non-residents could bear more of the burden so that there's less of an increase for residents?
You know, we can certainly look at it. I was conscious of the fact that half, probably half of our members are non-residents, so I wouldn't want to discourage that either, that's certainly helpful, but we could look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see more benefit for a resident. And I'm not against non-residents being there, but if you're telling me that other places are comparable to what you said, 250, 255.
250, 255 would compare to like our 200, what I'm proposing would be 200.
Okay.
Near the non-resident at 250 there.
How did the pool do this past year from a P and L standpoint?
You know, and I'm sorry if I'll give you this fingers for you, I took the time to pull the golf stuff and didn't pull the pool. Pull the pool. But it did almost identical to last year, right down to the very number of memberships as well.
On the income side, how did it do on the expense side, very similar again?
Yeah, well, that was a fixed cost for us, so.
Right, it was one thing.
One, or nine, something like that. And we did have some capital costs this year, like a vacuum we had to get for the pool.
I was going to say, it's a high use thing, there's a lot of parts that wear out on it.
So do we come online a little bit or what?
My guess, well, I don't know.
We were tracking, we were tracking, well, I know that we stayed open a couple of extra weekends and the weather didn't cooperate. So that dinged us a little bit, but at that point, we were approaching breaking.
Yeah, and I don't have any fingers in finance, I just couldn't.
Yvonne, explain to me the 175, 200, is this a range?
No, we usually offer a discount up to a certain point in May.
Okay.
It's there early for a discount, and, you know, we're, it's something to keep in mind, we're prevented to charge non-residents more, but it's got to be a reasonable amount more. So that's, it's kind of fluffy, but that's what the law says since we spent OD in our, or we got to OD in our grant for the pool.
Okay, that's a good thing.
So we can't like double them up.
The range last year was 150 and 285. For residents.
Now, another change that we're suggesting is under the daily rate, we have rather convoluted, you know, under this age is this and that. And we are just saying $7 and then children under two free, just to keep it clean.
I didn't believe, that's a good call there, that OD our money.
Yeah. Can we add?
What was last year?
And the $7, about a.
Was it 17 and under $5 delivered?
Well, that's, that's what we did, yeah. Right, we had $7 for a dollar, $5 for 17 and under, children under two free. And the year before that, it was even 20 here, even more right now, so they just thought, I mean, why, really?
Are we still going to have the, after a certain time, I know that, I would like to see it. But I think it spurs some late time people, somebody gets off work at five o'clock, it's 90 degrees, but the pool's not going to be open a couple of hours, but I'd just like to jump in, but I want to pay $7. Maybe an hour, you know, after a certain hour a discount. I think it might be a good way to generate some extra money. Five o'clock evening, right? Five after five, five o'clock somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's still three hours. More than I can stand. But I know the attendance, it drops off, my mic is a little bit full. But as soon as it's about five o'clock, it comes to empty. I mean, there's hardly anybody there, so that might help to get some people to walk.
Okay, great. Again, golf, I left open till we decide what we want to do.
Five question. One suggestion on the golf is you might want to have a group rate, where it's have, I don't know, raised to 10 for an individual, but if it's three portions or more, as a group, maybe.
To the amount of outing rate?
Yeah.
That's a great idea, I guess if people have.
Encourage them to bring, set up an outing or get other people to set up a league or something. I don't know what you want to call it, a league.
League fee.
Or league rate. League rate.
Yeah.
Who's responsible for the golf course, I know you are ultimately.
I guess it falls under service, I mean, Charlie has been the one taking care of it. But that would fall under service and.
Got anybody volunteering yet?
No.
No.
Well, there's one potential.
Right, one individual has expressed interest in taking a look at it, but.
Not a volunteering type.
Right.
Not a volunteering volunteer.
But one will follow along, just to see what it gives. Okay, so again, take a look, let me know if you have any thoughts, I guess we'll talk about the finance also.
All makes sense.
Alright, I mean, you know, we tracked out this year, you know, all the positive credit card. That's not possible for some people. Yeah, some folks just don't have a credit card. And more and more, you know, people have been either dropping them or losing themselves.
Well, maybe we could just advertise that as our preferred.
Yeah.
Is it a debit card? I mean, when you say credit card, it could be a debit card too, or exactly.
Well, I think you need to do credit, because you don't want to take anything on your account and leave.
Either one, I just didn't have it, you know.
Yvonne, we were, last year, we had to stop running down people's credit card numbers. Because they're not supposed to hold long terms, it's against the law. That's what they always, we always sit there and punch them in as a comment. We're not supposed to sit there writing down stories and stuff like that.
Okay.
I guess what they were telling, we got to speak to the staff doing that.
Is that Jeff Forbes' question about legality?
Yeah, we'll check.
Well, how would we do that? How about we ask Kim to research that with other?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they, some of it, they must do it, I know, you know, if I get a art school rental to run a wood splitter or something, it's, you know, they're going to run the credit card and the charge, you know, the net, whatever it is, but they'll essentially effectively put like a temporary.
Keep it simple, big cash.
Amount of deposit, so.
No, it's not simple for some people.
Yeah, that's worse for us.
Well, if they can't afford to put a down payment deposit down, they probably can't afford to pay you later on.
No, I think Yvonne's saying it's more work.
It's more work.
Yeah, it's more work, it's cash.
Alright.
Okay.
Fees, and when are you, you're looking for action on this from council?
Yes, well, but I mentioned we're discussing finances.
Okay, you've got to discuss the finance so that this probably won't happen until January, maybe earliest. Is that a fair assessment? And the temporary appropriations, we'll do that in September.
December, yes.
September.
Third one's information, House Bill 601 is the income tax informality push that's been introduced. There's not a lot of support by municipalities for it. We have some sample language for a letter expressing resolution. They probably do have a resolution to consider. You know, one of the big problems I have with it, if we go to this, the definition of income will be the same in every municipality in this state of Ohio. So like Glendale, or like Wyoming, that captures retirement, pension, dividend income. It's an income tax in Wyoming. Yes, it's. Right, and this, we, so we have an earnings tax. Yes, that's correct, which is a pretty, you know, it would corroborate our seniors. Yeah, because then we'd be looking to collect on social security, every other thing, and the history of the universe, and that's certainly not our intention. Right.
Alright.
Probably send Bud back to work.
We're typical.
The whole world's a conspiracy to get me back to work.
Alright.
Ready for the next one?
Let's rock and roll.
Okay, next item then would be the, a couple of items I want to mention, every of the green. Those are housing initiative, and one of the first ones is the, our home improvement repair fund that we have set up. And actually, we've received five applications to date. Replace exterior doors, replace windows and front door, replace windows, gutters, downspouts, replace gutters and downspouts, replace, replacement windows, windows, gutters, downspouts, are the applications. But one of the things that I wanted to draw to your attention is that after we started the process and our first one down, we have a review that we have to go through, the one that is called the 106 review. When are we spending federal money? And this is community development block grant federal money. I guess what we didn't realize is that this is going to add additional time to our review for this particular program. And in actuality, some of the items might not be approved for funding through this program. So what I've done for you, Beth, our consultant, also works with Hamilton County, does their 106 reviews for their federal funding, and has provided this checklist that we can use. And I'm going to try to incorporate the language into our documents. I took it off of the website, so we could have time to do this. And those who have currently applied, we'll probably let them know, there's going to be a little bit longer on the review process. And in fact, we may have to ask for some additional information. But essentially, what we're dealing with is that if, they'll be exempt from this review if the structure is less than 50 years old. Anything built during the 50s or later potentially eligible for the national register, and we'll have to go through this particular process. And for example, with the windows, that was our first one, they were a good quality window. But typically, what they'll be looking for is that the window replacement be an exact in kind. but typically, what they'll be looking for is that the window replacement be an exact in-kind replacement of the window in that particular facility.
For, for what? In-kind replacement of window?
That means if you have like a steel casement windows, they want you to have replacement casement windows, as opposed to a slider or a doula.
Oh, okay, so they don't want us to hit, okay, and this is...
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking at first they wanted to have the same steel casement windows.
Yes, it's bad, it's a real bad idea, but now, why is this, why would this be in-kind?
Um, this is, why is this happening?
Yeah, I didn't understand.
This is happening because of the potential eligibility for the National Register. So that anything over that age will have to go through this review, if it's going to get running through this program.
If it's gonna give this federal money.
Right, but if you own your own home, and you wanna change your casement windows to double lung windows, and you're not using any federal, federal money, you...
You can do that.
Let me do this, your doula, please, okay, there you go.
Yep, this is...
These are the, the federal screens.
Correct.
All right.
What's really interesting is that we're, you know, for being, these are the houses that were built seventy-five years ago. You know, these houses over here in Ireland, in Main Grove, and everything, if they're fifty or fifty-five or sixty years old, are they historical? That's, yeah, I, I didn't understand the thought process about that, they're just regular residential buildings.
Yeah, I think it has to do with the age, fifty, anything over fifty years, I guess.
Okay.
Be it here or anywhere else, I guess that must be a, a crit, one of the criteria for, for being owned.
So just matching the same character, but just not being with, like, what do you...
Yeah, well, and here's, I think, something, well, I'm getting us off the track, and I probably shouldn't do that, but, uh, you know, the national historic landmark thing won't cover the entire village. It's still not gonna cover the entire village, seven, one, I section, J section, likely will not.
Terry, is that, is that your understanding of the discussions that they were...
Actually, they were looking at the entire village, but the, the certain homes would be non-contributing, so they would not be subject to certain guidelines.
When they were here, um, back a month and a half or so ago, um, there was a lot of discussion, especially when we're down, talking on the Park District about what's included.
And I think that was the driving thing.
And what's not included, and what's, you know, contributing and not contributing, the I and J are not contributing.
Right.
So they probably wouldn't fall in line with this.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, I mean, thinking from a homeowner, um, let's say that someone needs new windows, they have X amount of dollars, and they're getting X amount of dollars from this, I consider it a grant.
Yes.
Then, um, if they have to change their windows, and I know we looked at doing windows at our house and trying to keep them, them original, and I had major sticker shock keeping them original, so that would mean that someone could not, if, if the only way they have to upgrade the windows is through this grant, they could be bumped out of getting new windows, is that true?
Could be.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and apparently, you know, she's willing to look at, you know, like, how close can you come to replacing a kinda thing? It would automatically, um, that they'd take their reviews for them, so it isn't that it would be, they'd be totally thrown out with a...
They're just weighed.
Have to look at the quality of what it would be versus the cost.
And do we, and do we know, um, sorry, do we know if, how's that judgment made, and who's, who makes that, is it Beth that makes the judgment?
Yes.
In other words, how close is close enough, because obviously, a lot of windows, you can't replace them exactly, I would think.
My understanding at this point for this funding, she would make that call.
And, but do we know how that's gone for other communities in the past, and...
Not at this point.
Okay.
This is all kind of unfolding, and I just wanted to make you aware of it, mostly because we have some applications now, we're gonna put on loan until we get this...
So this is all stuff that if you wanna do it, and you qualify for the money, income-wise, you won't be, have to be reviewed, you can do anything on this.
Right, that's correct.
Anything outside of this list, chances are you're gonna have to go through review.
That's right.
And that was what I, I was, you haven't had yet.
Um, I don't know at this point, but since we get a good handle on it, just, you know, we were thinking we have a week turnaround here, and I think it's gonna need two, maybe three weeks turnaround though. I'll keep you posted on how that goes. Uh, then another, another piece of the, um, our housing initiative was, if you recall, like, a couple months ago, I think it was, I had indicated that, again, Beth had recommended a builder that I used to get some costs for our apartment buildings on Cromwell. So please, Mel, provide me with that information, I wanted to point out some things for you, certainly take a look at it, but there's just a few things that I, I wanna point out right now, while we're all together, and first, what you need to know is this is just basic work. This is not work that would be, that would, he's not considering the Department of Interior Standards kind of work that would have to be done with these buildings. This is just basic, okay?
And this is not bid either, this is, this isn't, these aren't firm numbers.
Right, and this is just so we would have data on what does it cost to do these particular units. And to run through this, this, uh, it's, he's basing the figures that all sixteen units would be renovated at the same time, you know, having savings and doing all the units at one time. And the work he suggested, uh, obviously, both buildings are in need of, of new roofs. Both buildings actually have a fresh coat of paint, uh, he suggests updating the electric service to each building, the existing service panels and disconnects have not been upgraded since the buildings were built in nineteen thirty-eight. Uh, and he recommended landscaping to be refreshed, at an estimated total exterior work of fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And looking inside, um, at each unit, and again, doing it in bulk to save money, uh, each unit needs new energy-efficient windows, ceiling and walls need plaster, patching, existing electric panel located within the apartment should be changed from the existing fuse-type panels to a circuit breaker panel. Kitchen and bathroom circuits should have the GFCI protected outlets, kitchens should be updated, bathrooms should be updated, hardwood floors should be refinished, kitchen and bath should have new vinyl floors, and the bedroom should have new carpet and pad. And again, each unit should have a fresh coat of paint, for total interior cost per unit of nine thousand three hundred dollars, for total interior cost of the two buildings of a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. And given the exterior work that you need, as well as the interior work that he's suggesting, that's two hundred and two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Now, not included in this is any, um, heating and cooling, and we currently heat them with boilers, um, in the L E R conditioning that's available. There are some window units, uh, so he's suggesting the wall pack units that just require piping, no ductwork inside the units, but just a pipe that would go into the exterior. He's estimating those to be around two thousand per unit, so that would be an additional thirty-two thousand, per total, two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And again, that doesn't include, um, anything that would be to certain standards, unless you let me...
What was that, thirty-two...
Two, oh, thirty-two thousand for the HVAC? Well, we're talking about the Department of Interior Standards, I wish to have a copy of those, because we will be talking a lot about those in the future. There you go, and, and actually, though, it's a rather large packet, and there's one section devoted to rehab, but this is a summary of the ten major points that you're trying to accomplish when you renovate something to those standards. The additionally costs, additional costs that he outlines are, um, some of the, you can take a look at those, he's looking at taxes and insurance and things like that, and ways to make it an affordable project for somebody. Near the end, but before some of the data, he has some possible resolutions to the project. Two options he gave us, the most conventional would be to hire a real estate agent to handle it, um, we would be paying commission and putting a firm price on the buildings, but we could also make the sale contingent upon certain improvements being made by the buyer. And then a second option would be to sell the entire project using a sealed bid auction. Again, we would list the improvements that we would want to see in the, in the quality of each, of each, and that's where I think we would need to build in the Department of Interior Standards, so we could be sure that it's done to, to that quality. That this method of sale would allow the village to qualify the bidders placed on bid price and ability to do the project, so. What I'm working on is actually kind of an, an in-between, it's not really a sealed bid, but it's another RFP process, request for proposal process. And I'm looking right now at a number of our units, um, that would include some scattered townhouse sites, um, like twenty-six chalmers, we have some of them back in other places throughout the village, as well as the, the buildings that we have, and we have maybe like four units in the entire building, fourteen to twenty chalmers, you know, one, three, five drummers, those types of units. And then the one-bedroom apartments as well, that we could come to put in, um, the RFP, so it's one possible way of being employed on it, but, um, but we need to, we need to keep it moving, any thoughts on it?
I'd like to know, I'd like to know your thoughts, I mean, you've, you've worked at this closer than we have up to this point, what are your thoughts?
On the cost estimates?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I think they are very basic, and... I guess the one thing that surprises me is the, an estimate for nine hundred dollars on the windows, those windows, um, you know, what I've learned from the folks from the National Park Service, they have those very unique windows, I, I find it really hard to believe that somebody could replace those.
I doubt so.
For nine hundred bucks.
No, it's not, it's not, no way.
Yeah, that's, um, so, you know, again, if you had the standards, I, I don't know if there's a rule of thumb on the percentage that adds to the cost, but I'm sure you'd be looking at something more expensive, and I think we would want to be sure whoever renovates these follows those. So.
What about structural integrity of that building?
Uh, he didn't do a structural analysis, although, analysis, although he did look at it fairly closely, and...
Just got a concrete level with that?
Yeah, um, you know, the, the plaster inside each of the units, that's a, you know, it's gonna have to all be scraped and redone, because there's, you know, there's been some drainage from the porch, porches above, and so they all have any cracks in the same area, that kinda stuff. But he, he was not coming on that.
I mean, was he qualified to look at it structurally?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, he wasn't a structural engineer per se.
Because it, from some of the things I've heard, that there was some question about the structural integrity, seems like all of this is of little value if we are putting new windows on something that's structurally not sound.
We can get a structural engineer.
Yeah, I, I think, obviously, we need to, they, they need to be determined whether or not, um, there's, you know, additional structural costs that have to be born, have to figure out some way to, to make this project pay for itself.
It, it might be fine structurally, but...
Uncle Sugar wants their pay for, for us, but, um...
And do we need to, you know, have a structural engineer look at it?
Um, you know, we can certainly do that, I mean, that, that too will be a cost, or if we were interested in doing the bidding process or the RFP, we could put that on whoever's coming through, that they have the structural report.
Yeah, I, I don't know, from my perspective, I almost feel like the structural should be the first thing to be done, because if you hear someone's, you know, say, there's no way that you're gonna do this without taking the bones out and rebuilding it, um, then new windows and new roofs all don't matter. So I feel like we have to, we have to verify for the safety of whoever would be in there, um, verify that it's structurally sound, and, and I have no idea, I don't... Well, no, they were talking about the plumbing, it was a real serious issue. Cast iron doesn't, it's not supposed to last any more than sixty, seventy years, so they had a lot, lot of problems as far as the shrinkage of the cast iron, and the plumbing has to be redone.
So the units have to be totally replumbed, you think?
And there's a lot of structural issues in the areas where, you know, we've been before, even with our previous building manager, I walked around with him in a lot of the buildings, and you can tell plaster's holding on to the walls in some areas, it's kinda crazy. It's like the one over there on Cromwell, where we actually took out the whole face in laundry room, took off the plaster and found out that all the two-by-fours were disintegrated, even the one-by-sixes that were holding to the siding were disintegrated, and nobody knew it, because I guess that water spigot that was coming out for the outside, it wasn't a frost cream, they didn't have frost cream back then, the laundry rooms had poured concrete on top of wood, those studs all the way down to the foundation, the walls, so the water was just leaking when it froze up and kept on going into the crawl space. So all that water was spraying on that, nobody knew anything about it, and the plaster can, can retain it, especially when the water goes away. So also when they tore it all down, they had to take, put a whole new header in, span thirteen foot, 'cause all the wood was all gone. It was crazy, I took a look at it, and that you're gonna find that a lot of the places, that are like that. Well, it's just maintenance. And I think that, you know, having a third-party structural engineer look at it and truly evaluate it only makes sense where they're not, you know, they're not weighing other factors, and it becomes less of a debate in the end, if we know what we're dealing with structurally.
And any other issue he did not address, which would be, I believe, significant, is the asbestos issue, so, you know, any time you do any renovation of any size, you have to deal with that as well, so.
So, let me just...
Asbestos is a big issue in the painting process, whereas only in like demo and...
It's just lit, the paint.
You know, in, interior kinda stuff, when you get into the plumbing, you're gonna be dealing with the asbestos issue.
Well, siding, though, siding, those asbestos.
Yeah, so with some of the old tile that's on the floor, it has asbestos.
Asbestos as well.
So you gotta remove that.
So, with a structural engineer also, is part of that the plumbing, or, and not part of this? I wouldn't think so.
We could do reports on this up the wazoo.
Yeah. I, I think this is a good start to look at and say, hey, what would, give us a ballpark as to what it might cost. You know, there are obviously some additional costs here, and we've got some questions, and think a few things are a little low, but I think probably the next step is an RFP, and write the RFP, uh, in such a way that we would find out the plumbing issues and the structural issues.
Right, put that on the person who might have an interest, that they have to verify it, or...
I'm not real interested in spending a bunch more money right now, when I look at a number that is at a, nobody believes that two oh two's the right number. Two fifty isn't the right number, it's probably north of three hundred, and I, I don't know if, where we would get that money to, to do that work, so if we do an RFP, um, let's have somebody else pay for any additional.
That makes sense. Um, what, what was the cost to have this portion done?
Two thousand dollars.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, for the report.
Yeah.
What this says to me too is, uh, back further reporting, talking about other options, we, you know, one is, you know, selling, like, you know, whoever bought it, would be probably pretty much facing all of the same issues, and when you consider, this is probably a very conservative estimate, you know, when you look at the P and L, he's going on it, I don't know how anybody could, you know, have a mortgage payment loaded into this, the front side of this, and then add all the costs, or do a basic rehab, and they can level, and then they get their, be able to get the rent line to...
But it doesn't hurt to ask, right, I mean, we can do an RFP and...
No, what I'm saying is, to make them viable, I think, what it looks like, about the only way that we're gonna make these a, a good, of, of converting these to livable space is if we do it, and I don't see how somebody could buy them from us and then put that money into it and do it. It's just not, you know, it's just not gonna, P and L, they gotta work, but, you know, if the structure, if structurally sound, and according to this, if this is on the money, and I don't know if it is or not, if this is, I've got a chance of, you know, got a chance of, you know, getting those, getting those rented and getting people in there.
Yeah, but to me, if it doesn't make sense for a private investor on the P and L side, I, I don't want us to go any further either, and make it a, you know, blade money for us either.
I, I think there's other, some untangible things that have to be weighed in that decision, but...
Good start then.
Yeah.